Good evening. This is the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting, October 18th. It is 7:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee St. Barry?
Here.
Trustee Patrick DiAmbrazio?
Here.
Trustee Rexon McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Adam Mosip?
Here.
Trustee Mary Petlicov?
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts?
Here.
Chair James Thor.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of the following minutes for the Board of Trustees. Financial Stability Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, September 14th, 2021. Policy Committee Meeting, September 20th, 2021. Regular Meeting, September 20th, 2021. Special Meeting, September 24th, 2021. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support?
Okay, move by trustee Barry, supported by trustee McDonald. Any corrections that anyone saw was needed? Hearing that there's no corrections, can I have you attaching an answer roll?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Hi, so my name is Kyle Roberts. I am a 2016 Henry Ford graduate. After graduation, I did take a, turned down a full scholarship to Central Michigan to play baseball. And I was selected in the fifth round by the Texas Rangers in the 2016 draft. Due to a shoulder injury and I got released in 2019, I came over to Henry Ford and now am pursuing my bachelor's degree in business administration at Central Michigan University. And I'm using my knowledge skills and love for the sport of the baseball, sport of baseball as an assistant coach with Henry Ford Hawks. It is my first year officially, so it's glad to be back. Just happy to be back. Henry Ford helped me reach my goal with becoming a professional athlete and I'm excited to work with the current and our future Hawks to help them reach their goals too. Thank you for the meeting. Thank you guys for letting me talk. I hope you guys have a good day.
Mr. Roberts, is there anything more on that paper?
No, there's not.
Okay.
So if you guys had any personal questions or any questions you guys wanted to ask about the athletics or my career, you guys are welcome to.
It's okay, I'll do, I'll read those. Mr. Roberts didn't have, didn't have a chance to see that, but I do have some questions for you. So you don't know this, Mr. Roberts. We've never met, but I just want to share with the board. Mr. Roberts and I just met about three minutes ago and he was a little uncomfortable thinking that this, this introduction of himself was a little bit more braggadocious than he would normally be about himself, but I encouraged him to read it as written because he wanted to tone it down. And I wanted to underscore a part because I went to this university in the southern western part of the state called Western Michigan University.
Yep.
And I was pleased to see that you didn't think it necessary to go to Central Michigan University. You turned them down, which was a great decision.
Funny, funny story is I tried to do the recruiting myself, so I tried to email Western Michigan to go there and play baseball, but they never responded.
Oh, well darn. The Rangers wanted you, which I appreciate. Tell me, how does it, how's it going being an assistant here in Dearborn? And are you still, are you still pursuing your bachelor's degree with Central?
Yes.
How's that working?
Good. I got one more, one more year left and then I will be finished finally. So I'm glad within the contract negotiations, they give you a school scholarship. So depending on the amount of school previously you were going to or you were committed to, they will give you not the full amount, but they'll give you up to close to that. And then with being at Henry Ford, it's good to be back. There's a lot of things that need to be done, but I'm willing to kind of commit to make the change for it. So it's looking in the right direction, so I'm excited for the future.
Good. We're glad you're here and I won't hold it against you when you do fire up chips and get your bachelor's degree.
No worries. I'm just doing our global campus online, so not going there.
Well, I appreciate what, you know, you're a graduate of ours and that's a thing that we're really proud of.
That is.
And it sounds like you had a good experience here such that you're proud to be back and we're proud to have you back. And please do reach out if there are student athletes that my office can help.
Okay. That sounds good with me. I do appreciate it.
You may have some more questions from some of my colleagues here.
I have a quick question for you because I know that when I was first on the board, we took away what used to be the softball field.
Yes.
And made it into a parking lot.
Yes, ma'am.
It sounds like a song, almost. Where are you practicing and playing right now?
We are playing at the Cornerstone Ballpark as of last year, I do believe. And then this year we are, well, next year we'll be doing the same thing. This year we are practicing, and even in the recent years, we were practicing at Pat Park in Taylor, Michigan, which is kind of like a little league field.
Right.
So it's not the best upkeep. It's really hard to actually upkeep, so that's kind of where the stress levels are kind of increasing right there. And when you, during the recruiting process for me or like getting drafted, that type of look wasn't as beneficial.
I was going to ask you then, is it, is it more difficult to attract?
It is, I wouldn't say it's definitely hard to attract the people or like the scouts or like the teams, but I definitely think if the first impression is never really the best.
Although, the Taylors, the Taylor gang did pretty well for themselves.
Oh yeah, they did, they did amazing this year. So they, they are, from what I know, they are actually out of the same fields or like the same organization, Taylor, North West. But we play there, but I'm glad they're finally being able to play at Cornerstone Ballpark because that is an amazing field and I'm excited for them.
Now where's that?
I kind of wish I did play there, but.
Yeah, where's that located?
That is located Detroit.
In Detroit?
So it's for RBI program, but they allow other people to use it. Schoolcraft uses it, we use it, so.
So it's a little more professional?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's very professional.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else have any other questions?
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Chairman, if I might continue with acknowledgements?
Sure.
It's my pleasure to read and now I can share some of the jittery, jitters that some of our students and staff have when they have to read these, so bear with me. I'm pleased to offer these acknowledgements. Congratulations to math faculty member and department chair Scott Barnett, who's a friend of mine and a fantastic instructor. This is not the script, by the way, but it's still true because Scott was awarded the MISH My Tech Educator of the Year for 2020 at the annual meeting on October 9th. And if you're not aware of Mr. Barnett, he's in the cutting edge of trying to help our students do co-curricular education, which means that the students who need to get a little bit of an up, skill-ing in their math skills before they can take credit, they don't have to spin their wheels with that developmental education at the same time or spin their wheels while they're getting up to college level. They can take college level courses at the same time they're taking developmental courses, which is, it really is cutting edge. And Mr. Barnett, along with his math faculty colleagues are, I suspect, part of the reason why he got that award. Kathy, who does these? Patty, Patty's going to say, Russ, when he, when he reads these, he reads a lot more than I write. The International Council of Accreditation, ICA, provides accreditation to allied ophthalmic education training programs. Henry Ford College is the first ophthalmic technician program in the state of Michigan and received its first accreditation in 2011, second accreditation in 2014, and third in 2021. Congratulations on the continued accreditation of the ophthalmic technician program and a huge thanks to Kathy Campbell and Cindy Scheuer for their hard work in getting the OPT program accredited. HFC student clubs are once again coming together for more involvement and engagement and many clubs are planning their elections for officers. Although we are still operating virtually, students see the benefits of reaching out and connecting with their peers as well as faculty and staff. Some of the activities include a student forum hosted by the Student Council, a comedy magic show sponsored by the Student Council, and JJ the Mime sponsored by the American Sign Language Club. Student clubs are a great addition to a student's college experience. We are thrilled to see them coming back together and we hope that they'll be coming back together more in person because as one person said in a meeting that I was in recently while we were together, the person said, "It is fantastic to see you rather than to view you." And I, I want to add one thing to acknowledgements that didn't make the list but should have. We have a birthday that we missed by one day, but there is a member of your board who is celebrating a birthday number that is below mine that I will not disclose, but it probably makes it pretty easy to see, that trustee Mosip is enjoying the afterglow of a birthday on the weekend, which is rare for a dad. I hope you took advantage of that.
We did, thank you.
And the college and the board congratulate you trustee Mosip on your birthday and you can thank Kathy Dimitru for the wonderful gift from all of us.
Appreciate that.
And, Mr. Chairman, that is recognition and acknowledgements.
Thanks. Next item, please.
President's items.
Is that me too?
That's you too.
Couple things. The time we met last, which was last month, we had, what I hope you could see was a little bit of a surprise to me that we had some questions about some of the hiring decisions that the administration was proposing. I want to thank the board for coming back to meet on a Friday afternoon, afternoon virtually so that we could review those hiring decisions and I appreciate the board taking a second look at those things and indeed hiring those, those new colleagues we, we now have onboard. I also want to report publicly that that, that meeting resulted in a useful conversation between President Winless and myself and one of her vice presidents and one of the colleges' vice presidents. And like any time where things are a surprise or didn't go as exactly how you want, it's an opportunity to learn and I do have a lot of confidence that everyone that was in that meeting, President Winless, her vice president, it was Vice President Gonko and myself, we all came away with a better understanding of what happened there and how we can improve to hopefully not have the board be as surprised as it was last month. Next, I, I'll do one more topic and then pause for questions. We are excited and we are moving forward on strategic planning at our college. And we are actually in this room four hours a week, Mondays from 10 to noon and Fridays from 10 to noon, we are here and this morning was our third session. You may know that Dr. Tony Perry, who is the Faculty Senate Chair, is co-chairing that team with me and we're making great progress on the board's expectation that we get a strategic plan out to you. You've seen the list of the individuals who are on that committee and you are probably not surprised, but you're probably happy to learn that if you recall Kevin Martucci, the individual who talked to us at some length during acknowledgements and recognitions last month, he serves on the committee with us and we were breaking up into small groups and I, we had him there in my small group just this morning and I was just so impressed and grateful that he was there because all of these people who want and are pushing for a great strategic plan recognize that student voices and student needs and student-centered requires a student voice. And so poor Kevin had to be peppered with questions literally about right here this morning. So, so that, that is moving forward. I'm happy to chat with you offline about that process and I'm also excited that this college is going to be taking up that, that task of deciding who we want to be and where we want to go in the future. And I want to thank everyone who's on that committee, especially Dr. Michael Nealan, who has been a good support to me and the committee on that. Questions on either of those items?
One comment I'll make is regarding the strategic plan, I'd sent something out to the board, just so everyone knows that there is a seat at the table for the board. So let us know if you're interested in attending any of the sessions. The sessions are happening Monday and Fridays from 10 to noon, as President Kavalon said, usually right here.
Can we just, well, because I did, I did email you back and said that I'd take, take on a couple, just to step in and take an observational position. Do you need a heads up prior to?
It would be useful, but not required.
Okay.
The utility there would be an opportunity for me to give you materials that the, that the strategic planning team had evaluated. For example, this, this morning, the agenda had us reviewing homework. No, no kidding. Tony Perry has issued homework to most of us. If you're going to show up, you're probably going to get asked about the homework.
Do you want, if board members are interested in, in attending, do you want them to contact me and then I can relay it to you or do you want it to go straight to you? Just so we don't accidentally have more than one in any session?
I think that's fine, to have you be the person who reaches out.
Okay. All right, so let me know, all the dates at least were sent to me. Kathy, can you send it to the other board or just let them know all the dates?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Any additional questions for President Kavalon before we move on?
Okay, thank you. The, the next item I wanted to talk about was that the, you may have read in the newspapers that the state of Michigan and our leaders in Lansing did come to an agreement as to how to spend the monies that they've received. And the monies they received have, have been larger than any time in the history of our state. And for perspective, the, the state budget is in the $60 billion range and right now they passed a budget that left another $10 billion left to be spent. So we as a college have been working hard trying to, to suggest and show why we should be positioned for some of that remaining dollars. But that, that work goes on, but the, the great news is that in that budget and of course with divided government in Lansing, these are compromises and they're the product of two sides working together to come together and decide how to fund really important things like public education. And we were really excited and, and happy that the legislature and the governor's office came together and did pass an increase in, in funding for community colleges and universities. And the, not to look a gift horse in the mouth, the one thing we're concerned about is that was a one-time funding mechanism, whereas historically the funding that comes to community colleges and universities is add to the base and then thought to be there to add to again the next year. So we're, we're looking at the bright side and hopefully that will be the case, but it, it was a significant increase in funding that we haven't seen in many, many years, probably more than a decade. I, I believe that there was increased funding for K through 12, but I believe that happened earlier in the summer. And of course, I was watching very closely with the higher education, so we're grateful for our state leaders who helped us accomplish that. The last thing I'll mention is how proud I am and how, how grateful we are as a college for the partnership we have with Dearborn Public Schools. And frankly, how great the partnership is was as, was a result of the United States Department of Education awarding the Henry Ford Early College a Blue Ribbon Award, which is rare on its own, but certainly rare for high schools and certainly rare for high schools that are trying to do things in a different way and really innovating. So we were proud to, to be able to honor Majid Fadlala and the students that attend Henry Ford College and frankly, all of the employees at Henry Ford College that support the Henry Ford Early College team. It's a, it's now a national standard with this award and we're really happy about it. So Dr. Malaco, the superintendent of Dearborn Public Schools and I thought, well, what better way to celebrate Boss's Day than to show a, a, a blue ribbon high school on your college campus? And of course, Boss's Day was recently celebrated and so I hope you all feel from us at the college and from the P-12, I speak on behalf of Dr. Malaco, congratulations on Happy Boss's Day. I believe it was a week, no, Friday last week. So we're three days behind, but congratulations and I hope that that feels like a great victory for you all. Any questions on any of those things? And if not, I am done, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see any questions. Thank you very much for the report. Next item?
Next item, special reports. Audit presentation for the year ending June 30th, 2021. Vice President Sattkovsky.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. I have asked the chairman if he would allow for Mr. Sattkovsky to hand the baton proverbially to two folks who are professionals that help us with the audit. So I'll invite our auditors and our colleagues, Dana Coombs, who is a partner at Plant Moran, and Courtney Heller, who is a senior manager at Plant Moran, to come and give you their presentation on their evaluation of our college. And I, Ms. Coombs, I really do want to steal your thunder, but I won't. So I'll just, I'll just be quiet.
Fair enough. Appreciate every, having us here this evening. The thunder that I appreciate was not stolen, is another great year for the college. As a result of our audit procedures, we did not identify any audit adjustments nor audit findings from the work that we've done. So we will provide the, the college with an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion that you can receive and one that you've come to expect. There was a lot of new items in the financial statements this year, the federal funding around CARES Act and HERF, as well as state funding with CRF. And even with all of that additional funding, the college management did a fantastic job of preparing for our audit and collaborating with us throughout the year to make sure that they were utilizing those funds appropriately. We've met with the audit committee to go through our audit results in detail and tonight, Courtney will go through our presentation, which highlights the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Dana. We have the presentation up on the screens if you want to follow along. Starting on the first slide we have here, this presents the high-level summary of the net position of the college over the past three years. If you go down to about the middle of the page here, you'll see that the total net position of the college increased overall. And then that second to last line at the bottom represents the net pension and OPEB, which would be the college's share of the MIPSers pension and healthcare plan. So a really a non-cash item. And then once that's taken out of the net position of the college, as we pull it out since it's not in cash, you'll see that the net position increased and is positive $107 million, which is an increase of about $25.2 million from the prior year. Moving to the next slide, we've got the general fund net position. And again, in this first column, we've pulled out the pension and OPEB liability to present the general fund without it. You'll see there's a net increase this year in the general fund of $843,000. Again, a great year for the college. Down at the bottom, we have the original budget and amended budget and you can see that the college beat the amended budget by about $690,000 this year. Next, we wanted to present the unrestricted net position. So this shows the general fund and the auxiliary fund from 2016 through the end of this year. And you'll see that $843,000 increase in the general fund. And really what this slide is showing is the total available to be spent by the college. Overall, an increase of $700,000 in these two funds combined when the pension and OPEB liabilities pulled out. On this slide, we have a breakdown of the revenue by source for the college. You'll see here that in the pie chart we have, that tuition and fees makes up about 50% of the college's revenue, which when compared to other similar institutions on the right is a much higher percentage and really that's because of property taxes. Other similar institutions have a higher property tax base. On the next slide, we have the general fund expenditures and this would be the total expenditures excluding transfers. You'll see that instruction and instructional support for the college are the largest portion of expenses. That's about 60%. And if you compare that to other similar institutions there on the right, you'd want to add up instruction and instructional support as sometimes the makeup between colleges can be slightly different. The college is at 60% and peer institutions are at 54%. Up above, you'll see that the bad debt expense continues to be very small, only 1% of expenditures. The college continues to manage that. Finally, we wanted to present the revenue and expenses of the general fund year-over-year. The blue line represents revenue and the red line expenses. You can see that the college has really managed revenue and revenues exceeded expenses for a number of years now. The dotted line there on the right represents the budget and the college expects to do the same next year. And that takes us through the presentation. Any questions?
I have one question. On slide six, when we're going through the expenditures, you mentioned the instructional and instructional support. Would you also add administrative services to figure out, call it payroll expenses as a portion of the total college expenses?
Yeah, so there would, payroll expenses, I would say are throughout the majority of the categories.
Okay.
Majority being in instruction and instructional support, as well as institutional administration, but even in some of the other categories, smaller payroll costs.
What would you estimate of our total budget, what goes towards people, payroll and things?
I'd say, don't quote the auditor, but I'd say approximately 75%.
75% roughly?
Yes.
I think it's a little higher. I would say it's a little, I don't know, maybe 80?
Maybe towards 80?
I think it's 82-ish.
I think that's with the P-12 too, so that would make sense at 80% or so.
Okay. Trustee Barry?
Just a quick comment. I know year in, year out, we expect a clean audit, but I just want to go ahead and say that a lot of great work happening with John Sattkovsky and his team. Amazing work done, so that's why we get to sit here and just expect a clean audit like Dana was saying, so just wanted to give them some acknowledgements.
Trustee Watts?
So with the 82%, is that also including benefits and healthcare insurance, so I agree with you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is action items. First, we start with citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. For action, who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board might not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. We do not have any citizen questions.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion action below. Move to approve items one through five as recommended in this agenda.
Still moved?
Second. Motion by trustee McDonald, support by trustee Petlicov. Are there any items, questions on any items? All right. All those in favor of the recommended action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Next item, please.
Next item, Board of Trustees Business. Acknowledgement of correspondence.
I just want to remind everybody, we got a letter from 1650 at the P-12 board meeting, rather than through the mail.
Next.
Board Committee Reports.
We just had the Audit Committee. Trustee Barry, were you going to speak on that?
Ladies did a good job doing that, so.
Enough's been said about it.
Unless you want me to repeat the report.
No, don't need to repeat. All right. Any other committee reports? You know, let's, let's talk about the ad hoc committee then, trustee Mosip.
So the ad hoc committee had their last meeting last week. All of the meetings were virtual and included three trustees, myself, trustee Petlicov and trustee DiAmbrazio. Those meetings included presentations from the college vice presidents on many topics that the committee members suggested. We had brainstorming sessions where different members presented some ideas that the college can look into. We had about 14 at one point and we were able to condense, condense those items into four items that were.
four items that were sent to you. Those four recommendations were also voted on and were given a consensus or, high consensus, low consensus, or consensus, or no consensus. The four, three out of those four received high consensus from the committee members. Four recommendations, three recommendations are very worthwhile to look into and then the fourth one that received low consensus, that is also very important to look into.
Trustee Mosip, since you're going to be doing a presentation in more detail on this, probably at the next board meeting.
Yes.
So if you can just do like a, a high-level recap of those three maybe?
Sure, yeah. So the, the first recommendation was talking about the focusing on trades that the college needs to do more hands-on to evaluate its trades program, apprentice programs, and also the way to market those programs to its future students. There were, there was also a push for looking into cybersecurity, alternative renewable energy and electric vehicles. The second recommendation was to, since we just are coming out of the pandemic and obviously most, most of our instruction moved online, but that kind of market is still very interesting and worthwhile for Henry Ford to look into so it can expand enrollment beyond the geographical area that we're in. The third recommendation was to look at partnerships and recruitment, relationships with major metro businesses, corporations, and take them to the next level. And then the last recommendation, which again received low consensus, was to look into increasing the tax base. Today, we were just reviewing the audit and it, it is something very, very interesting to look into as the college only has 14, what was it, 14% of its budget coming from, or of its revenue coming from local tax revenue. And it's something that I, I think it's worthwhile to explore and we will have more details on that next meeting.
I asked Trustee Mosip to give a very short summary at this meeting because the strategic planning has already begun and I didn't really want to wait and hold up strategic planning for this. But I did want the board to have a chance to, to hear that some of the things that the Ad-Hoc Committee is coming up with will be things, again, focusing on innovative programs, assessing and reevaluating remote learning, and looking to increase partnerships, outreach and recruiting. I didn't think anything there would be too off-the-wall, that we wouldn't be happy to forward this onto the, the strategic planning, to let them know that, that this is some of the legwork that's already being done. Any questions on, on that one, on those couple of items? All right. So we'll, we've already got the report. We can make sure it's being shared with the Strategic Planning Committee so they can know some of the things that have already been discussed. And then we can get the report in more detail then at the next board meeting and continue to work on these in more detail. Great. Next item?
Next item is Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
All right. Doesn't look like any additional ones.
Okay. Next item is Board Member Commentary.
Trustee McDonald.
Just real quick, I just want to acknowledge that we lost a great statesman today in Colin Powell and I wanted to share, one of my very favorite quotes, because it's attributed to him, is that perpetual optimism, optimism is a force multiplier. And if you think about it, if you go into any situation with a positive attitude, you bring people along, you, it makes a difference. So I just wanted to give him a little acknowledgement and say that we did indeed lose a great statesman today.
Thank you.
Last week, President Kavaluna and myself attended a dedication to former trustee Lane and its bench right off the River Rouge here on the college campus. And it was a very short and sweet event. And once again, I'd like to thank former trustee Lane for her service to this college and as recently being on the Ad-Hoc Committee as well.
Any additional comments from the board? All right. Next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, November 8, 2021, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, November 15, 2021, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, November 15, 2021, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
We are adjourned, everyone have a good evening.